The tree is not going to look represent what you're doing.
Oh, yeah.
But we did not.
I just wondered, it was just a random thought.
We dressed it up with lights. We dressed up white, it looks real good, they love it.
I called to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, at six thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Here.
Commissioner Carr?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Here.
This evening, we're going to have our invocation by Reverend Lisa Bradford of the Church on the Bayou, if we can all stand, and then at the end of the invocation, if we can turn and pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pray with me. Gracious Creator God, on this final meeting night of the year, we are mindful of the many blessings that we often take for granted here in this beautiful city. We thank you for democracy with all of its complications, and we're mindful of the privilege of being able to live in freedom. Bless each person here, bless their families, and help us, God, to let greed have no seat here ever, and that wisdom would prevail. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, I want to make just a couple announcements. One, items fifteen A and fifteen C have been deferred, due dates to be determined. Those are ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash twenty-two concerning the Land Development Amendment annexations, and also ordinance twenty twenty-two dash twenty-four, which is regarding the coastal high hazard area. Those will be rescheduled at a date to be determined. Also, item thirteen, we had a request from staff to defer that to sometime in the future. They'd like to do a little more outreach on that. Item thirteen is the Union Academy Area Finding of Necessity. So we'll be hearing about that after the first of the year. With that, I'd like to start on the agenda. We've got a special presentation this evening. Ms. Langford, if you can come forward, please. For everybody, this is Caroline Langford. She's one of our planners in the planning department. Like all of our planners, they do an excellent job. And this evening, we want to extend an appreciation to Ms. Langford, and I want to read the citation. The Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, present this certificate in appreciation of your accomplishment in securing a highly competitive grant awarded by the National Trust for Historic Preservation from the African American Cultural Heritage Action Fund to support a cultural resources survey for the Union Academy neighborhood, and serve as a foundation for future preservation programs in the community. Your hard work has made a positive impact on the city. Caroline, thank you very much. Ms. Langford hasn't been here long with us, but there's tremendous work that's going on in the planning department. We're kind of looking at everything, the Comprehensive Plan, Land Development Code, and I think that the commission understands all the work that's being done. In addition, this grant is particularly special because it doesn't come from a government agency. It comes from a non-government agency, and it was a highly competitive grant, something that we'd like to do in the city that's very important to us, to establish eventually a character district in the Union Academy neighborhood, just like their Greek Town character district that we're working on, and also the traditional historic district that we've got, in order to basically better define Tarpon Springs of what we are. The grant was for fifty thousand dollars, and it's going to go a long way to get us started on the process. So that was a hard, a high bar to achieve because it comes from a private foundation, not anything associated with the government. So, Ms. Langford, thank you very much. And would you like to say anything?
Just, I appreciate being appreciated and the opportunity to work in this wonderful, vibrant community.
Thank you. And by the way, this certificate is a long time ago. We had it scheduled on the meeting of Ian. Then we had it scheduled for another meeting, and then finally, for whatever reason, that didn't happen. So tonight, we did it. Congratulations, three meetings is a charm. Thank you very much. Okay, let's go to public comments. Is there anyone here for any public comments on anything that's not on the agenda?
Be still my heart.
I'm going to ask one last time. Is there anybody that is here that would like to make a public comment?
I think we need to send out a search party for a couple people.
Yeah, I know.
Silence is our gift to the board.
All right. Mr. Jump, are there any comments by remote access?
And we do not have anyone attending at this time.
Okay. Ms. Jacobs, are there any emails?
We have no emails for this.
Okay, well, we're going to mark this meeting as a first.
Pinch me.
So we're starting off on the right foot tonight. Okay, so the next agenda, the next item is the consent agenda, and I'm going to read these off. One is satisfaction release of liens. Number two is attorney's fees, A for Johnson Jackson, B for Drast Dagnall, C for Unisalsman, D for Voss Law Firm. Number three is award file for historic reservations consultant survey. Item four is award a file for single source purchase of chlorinator equipment. Item five is to award a file for flooring replacement at the community center. Item six is to award a task for single source purchase of mental health resources. Item seven is to approve a change order for the comprehensive plan update. Item eight is utilizing the school board Pinellas County contract for motor vehicle parts. Item nine is to increase a file for purchasing chemicals for the reverse osmosis water plant. Item ten is to increase the contract for single source purchase of a corrosion inhibitor. That's also for the reverse osmosis plant. Item eleven is authorize execution of the American Rescue Plan Act beneficiary agreement for the money that we awarded to the Tarpon Springs Chamber of Commerce. Item twelve is to authorize execution of a contract for conducting the municipal election. That's between the city and the supervisor of elections at the county, in order to provide them some payment for this election that's coming up in March. Does any commissioner, would they like to pull anything? Yes?
I just want to make comments on one and five, so you can pull one and five. I'm sorry.
One and, one and five?
Two, two, I'm sorry.
Two and five?
Yes, please.
I've got eleven on my side.
Which one?
Eleven.
Okay. Okay, then basically, what I'd like to do is have a motion to approve one, three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and twelve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Uh, excuse me. I should ask if there's any public comments concerning any of those items.
Any remote access comments, Mr. Jump?
And we do not have anyone attending at this time.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Item two, Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. As Vice Mayor loves to read things, I love numbers. So I did, this is just for facts. I did some numbers, and October, November, we've had attorney fees of total of eleven thousand dollars per month. All last year, we had numbers of twenty-two thousand per month. So, just facts, that's all.
Okay. Does any other commissioner have any comments on this? Are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any public comments concerning item two, attorney's fees?
And we do not have anyone attending at this time.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's any further discussion, I'd like to have a motion to approve that one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay, item five, Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. I did look over this, and I did want to make a comment, as far as, I think this is a great deal. I think it was a good accident that needed to happen. But on the same time, I would like to let the city manager know that all of the air conditioning units should have a float switch on it, so that this doesn't happen to any other locations. That's it.
Okay. Are there any other commission comments on this item? Okay, public comments, are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
And we do not have anyone attending at this time.
Okay. Have a motion in a second, please.
Moved.
Second.
Second, okay.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Item eleven, Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I'll keep it short, Mayor. I just don't support the fifty thousand dollars of the chamber, so I know that the city got a great amount of money from the ARPA funding, but I do think there's some other opportunities in the city we could use this. Although I do recognize the chamber's work that they do, but I just don't support the fifty thousand tonight.
There are any commission comments concerning this item? This is something that we had already approved sometimes in the past, and this is a formality that is a beneficiary agreement to demonstrate its purpose concerning the requirements of the ARPA grant. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, any comments by remote access?
And we do not have anyone attending at this time.
If there's any, if there's no other discussion among the commission, I'd like to have a motion to approve in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
No.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Okay, we're going to go to the item fourteen. Item thirteen has been deferred, special events. City Manager Lacorice.
Yes, there's two, there's two events on the special consent. We'll deal with the first one, which is the First Friday event. The main reason it's on special consent, aside from regular consent, is there's two changes being requested on this. There are two changes I'm not sure I'm in agreement with, but I'm going to leave it to the board and to listen and decide it. The two changes are the request for the road closure to move another half an hour down on each of the cases, and the second one is the closure of Court Street on an as-needed basis. If this is approved, recommend the event sponsor notify the city two weeks in advance, as well as any businesses affected by the closure. As you know, we've had issues on the closure, and we've dropped it once. We did, the merchants did go notify everybody along the affected area that this was being brought up, and that the change of time was being brought before you. So everybody was noticed to have a chance to let you know how they felt on that one. As far as adding another street to an event, this is a huge event, and I'm not sure there's a need to expand it more than it already is. So again, I pass that forward to you as the two changes, and for this board to look at and discuss, and have a decision on it.
Okay. According to our rules, this is something we're going to act on, and the city manager gave the presentation, so I'm going to ask the public whether they have any comments, or merchant association is here present. Are there any public comments concerning this item? This would include any Ms. Rodriguez, if either of you would like to say anything. You don't have to, but I just want to make sure this would be the time that you would do that. Are there any public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
And do not have anyone attending at this time.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Carol Rodriguez, Tarpon Springs Merchant's Event Planner, Coordinator. Court Street is as ad needed, so basically, the months that we would need, the little section of Court Street, would be October and November. So if you allow that, fine. If you don't, that's okay also. But we, in those two months, we have a lot of people that it's hard to place. So that would be your consideration. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to commission comments. I'm sorry, is there anybody else? I want to double check, make sure there's no other public comments here. Okay. Vice Mayor Lunt?
All right, so I kind of noticed this as well, and, you know, I understand that, you know, there's a need to expand in some cases because there's just an overwhelming amount of vendors. My concern here, especially for Court Street, would be the fact that there are people living in that building. You've shut down, you've shut down Tarpon Avenue, now you want to shut down Court Street. They have no access to their home.
It's only a small portion.
Ms. Rodriguez, please.
So that's my concern there, was the fact that there's residents going to be affected. I mean, they're somewhat affected now because of, you know, whatever goes on in Mayor's parking lot, but at least they have access to their homes. This would remove access, and that's my only comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr?
Thanks, Mayor. My understanding is just going to be Court Street, it's not the all of Court Street. I'm not sure if the city manager understands this one or not, but...
They bested.
I did talk to the merchants, and it sounds like it's just going to be the, from Ultra Nineteen to Mother Mayor's parking lot, so there's still access from Wells Fargo parking lot into Court Street, and then the city parking lot into Court Street. So it's not all of Court Street, that's going to be eliminated. Although technically, there's not a public road to get to those areas, but you could still access it through Wells Fargo. So with that, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. It's maybe three times a year that this may happen. The cool thing about this is, is it's a good problem to have, I think. First Friday, I think, is wildly successful for downtown, bringing in individuals into the city, and also for the residents of the city of Tarpon Springs. So I'd like to commend the merchants association, because I know there's a lot of work that goes behind that, and it's a great event each month. So with that, I don't have a problem with Court Street. Mr. Lacorice, did you get any notification from any business owners about timing issues of setup or anything like that?
I have got none, and obviously, we didn't get any to the court law, so I've got none on this.
Okay. Did, can I ask them a question, Mayor? Is it...
If you'd like, and if they'd like to answer, that would be...
Yeah, I would like to ask a question. Can you come to the microphone, Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, Mr. Carr.
Did you, did I understand that you went to all the businesses on Tarpon Avenue to drop off flyers?
We sent an email through the business district in downtown.
Okay.
And I have a response on my phone that I could, no one, everyone was for it.
Okay, but I mean, you didn't have anybody say no about it or anything along those lines?
No.
Okay, all right. And we don't have anybody else here that I'm aware of tonight speaking against it. So with that, I'm okay with the two. I mean, if we want to put some type of parameters on that three months out of the year, they could close part of Court Street to see how it goes for this year, and the next year, you could adjust it. It's a special permit, so it could, it could be pulled or adjusted anytime by the city, but that one piece of Court Street, if it, I don't have an issue with that. It's good to see growth in this.
And it's basically only October, November, and maybe Snow Place, if that ever happens.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner?
Can I ask a question now that Carol's back up there?
Would you care, I mean, you'd like to ask a question?
Can I ask a question?
Why don't we just wait to get through?
I'm okay with letting him ask the question.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Carol, did you talk to any of the residents in that building at all? I know you talked to the businesses along Court Street. Did you talk to the residents?
No, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no issue with the three o'clock. I do have a little bit of an issue with the Court Street, and not so much for either what was said, more so for safety. It's hard enough to get a police vehicle to block Tarpon Avenue. I would hate to see a situation where people are coming up Alt Nineteen, they're, you know, going slow, and then they turn into Court Street. I don't know how much you can gain, or, you know, by doing, you know, how many more booths you could put in. Excuse me, but I don't really see that. You know, if you're talking about for possibly one event, like Snow Place, because that was slammed, I might consider that. I don't know if I would consider it for a couple of months. So that's...
Commissioner Kuyas?
I'd be willing to give them October for Court Street to see how, of an experiment, see how it goes, and give enough time to get feedback, you know, if any nearby residents or business owners, it bothered them, or if they were for it, just as an experiment. And I don't think it'd be too much for us to either come back and, you know, have them come back for November approval, because it's fall time, October, November, December, and yeah, I want as little roads closed as possible, but it's, it is a good, they are good events, and I'm willing to at least give the October to see how it goes.
Okay. I'm going to ask you, but you'll probably defer to Chief Young. We pass this through the police department as well for circulation?
I believe, I believe you got that through the police department to look at this for the special event?
Yes.
Your person's office.
Okay. Here's my thoughts on it, and I always want to accommodate whatever we can. I've been there for about two years. They do an excellent job, the merchant association does an excellent job. It's something that, quite frankly, I don't think we could replace. I don't know of anybody that would replace them, although they're making overtures to finding somebody, but that, I doubt that that will happen. So the merchant association's very valuable to the city in terms of a lot of things that you do, not just the events, but also the philanthropy that takes place. So I know that there's issues of trying to get vehicles, I would suspect that that may be it, to try and get vehicles out of the way before people start showing up. I know people are starting to show up a little earlier. I know you've canvassed the people downtown. I don't have an issue with approving the three o'clock tonight unless we find that that becomes problematic later. I want to make that as a condition, so everybody understands that. The other part of it is that I just hope we use that extra half hour wisely, in terms of making, getting in there and getting things set up. I know we are all there waiting for people to show up, but I know sometimes there's laggards and it creates an issue, and sometimes people are there, then they know exactly what to do, and they get set up right away, and I know our police department does a pretty darn good job of getting people that are parked there, out of there, searching for people, finding them, and asking them to relocate their vehicles. So I don't have an issue with approving the three o'clock, but I want to make sure that that doesn't become a problem next year. On the Court Street, I'm not sure, I, here's what I would like to do on that. You're talking about the months that would be, that you would like it, would be later in the fall in the year, right? Okay?
Correct, October, November, possibly December.
The issue I have, and I know the police department has looked at that, but I'm up at that end, and the one thing that is very important for Court Street is that when hibiscus is blocked up, which some, it's, most of the time it's open, but it does get blocked up, and then Tarpon Avenue gets blocked up with people trying to set up at that end. Court Street is the only access out, and that's making a left out of Court Street, down, around the parking lot, out, and finding a parking space. If we start setting up on Court Street, I, I'm a little concerned about blocking off people being able to get out and set up until we find either the end of Tarpon Avenue, which our police department does a good job with that, and there isn't a policeman down at Court Street, but they are at the traffic light. And there isn't a policeman down at Court Street, but they are at the traffic light to get that out. I don't have a problem with going forward with. And I'm not sure how to do this, I'm going to ask the city manager about how he would think. If you're not going to need this approval for Court Street, the other thing that I'm not comfortable with is approving something on a case-by-case basis. I would like to know exactly what you're going to do so that it's not giving anyone somewhat of a blank check as far as something happening and the commission not being aware of it. The, I, I know there's coordination with everybody with the Police Department on each event, but I would like to have, even if, and I know that this would have normally been on the consent agenda tonight, except for these modifications that were being requested, right, on the, okay.
Yes.
So I would like to move forward with not revisiting. I don't have a problem with, in principle, agreeing to your request, but I'd like to go ahead and approve the dates, go ahead with the 3 o'clock. I mean, this is my conversation, or at least thoughts, and it's up to what the rest of commissioners do. And then if you feel like we close Court Street, I would like to revisit that closer to those months that you're talking about, and we can do that on a consent agenda. And we could have, and I'd be happy to work with you up there since I'm the one that's up there helping set up, how are we going to deal with this circulation and getting people out of there? And of course, you could bounce that idea off the Police Chief and the Police Department as well. I mean, I would hope that that would be agreeable to you. Just right now, I'm not, and then, of course, it does take additional parking spaces off the, you know, makes them unavailable too.
Can I just say, it's not all of Court. So you would still be able to drive out of Mother Mayor's and make that left to Court. So we're stopping it from the driveway of Mother Mayor's to alternate 19. So it's not, it doesn't go past. So if we need people to leave through, they can still drive through Mother Mayor's like they do and make the left. It's just that small little portion. Because what happens in like November, we have our local dance performers who want to perform dancing, and they need the Mother Mayor's where it's flat, they can't dance on cobblestone. So then we give them a huge space, and then we have no place to put additional vendors. So if we want to rewrite it, it can say only October or November, or only November. That's my two months that we really have an issue.
The, the, the backup, and quite frankly, you provided comments for Hibiscus and Tarpon Avenue. The only thing I saw on the backup for Court Street was two asterisks. One up by alternate 19, and then the other one just before the public parking. And I would assume the entire area between the two asterisks was being requested to be taken out, and that the parking lot was being left open in order to provide a loop so somebody could come into that parking lot from Lemon, Lemon Street, loop back around and go back out. That's the backup I saw. And I had, I actually discussed that with the city manager as far as an interpretation, because there was no other information that was available in the backup.
Okay, sorry. But it's only the little portion, if you're going to Court Street out of Mother Mayor's from the right of the exit to alternate 19.
Okay. Would you have an objection to?
Coming back, no.
Coming back, those months that you needed, okay. And, and if there's some other month that you need it, we can, we can talk about. You've seen me on every First Friday, you can share your thoughts with me on that, and anybody up there. So that's basically my thoughts on this. And I, you're nodding your head, you're okay with that? Are there any other comments from the, from the commission on this? Would anyone like to make a motion?
So you want just to have a motion to approve the 3 o'clock and to come back on the Court Street?
Yeah, amend those particular months that the, that the Merchants Association would like to have it for, as, as Ms. Rodriguez described, but we don't need to get into the details, but just to amend that portion, portion when Court Street needs to be utilized. They may, may even rethink what part of Court Street that they would want to do, rather than approving something like that tonight and maybe coming up with something a little later that would require an amendment anyway. And then the only other thing with the 3 o'clock, I, I don't have a problem supporting it. I'm very appreciative that you, you, you talked to the business owners, but I want to make it clear that, you know, that, that's okay as long as we don't start getting comments, and then we have to have a discussion on that.
I have a question for the city manager, if I could, before we make a motion. Is there any way to coordinate with the county about the lights on Orange Street and possibly Lemon Street, and even Tarpon Avenue? Because I think there's, Orange Street tends to back up pretty heavily when Tarpon Avenue is shut down. And if there's an opportunity on First Fridays to have those lights be a little bit longer, I don't know what that would do consequential, like for the other lights, but at least they could look into to see if there's an opportunity to open those up a little bit more, to get to more traffic flow.
From the past dealings, Jeff, I don't think so, but we can always ask. But I don't think that's an oppor, I don't think that's an opportunity to change it like that. Change it like that, but, but we can always, Jeff can always ask, he's been told no before.
So motion to approve 3 o'clock, and we will, depending on comments, we will address it down the road. And we will, Court Street, we will discuss at a later date.
That's right.
Okay.
All right, second.
If, if there are no other discussion on the commission, I have roll call.
I, still, one just side comment, Carol. I would feel much better about this, even if we bring it back before us later on, if the tenants in that building were polled as well as just the businesses.
Okay.
And because.
I can speak to the tenant manager.
If we cut that off, and I guess I know they can come through the Wells Fargo parking lot, but they're coming into a one-way street, which means they still have to turn left to get any access to that little strip of parking behind that, so. I, I'd, I'd really like the residents to be.
Just so you know, the parking behind the apartment building, two spaces are one amazing find, one is FedEx, one is Wine Society. I think there's only three parking spaces that actually are for the tenants.
Well, that could possibly be, but I'd still feel better if the, if the tenants were polled.
That's not a problem.
Before we go to a vote, for the record.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to add something, or?
No.
Okay. For the record, I want to point out for the public, if there's anyone watching tonight, Vice Mayor Lunt and Mrs. Lunt volunteer for First Fridays. Mr. Commissioner Cullias volunteers in setting up for Friday. Commissioner Eisner, Ms. Mrs. Eisner, Commissioner Eisner's wife helps in setting up. Actually, she works the entire function for First Friday, and then, of course, I help set up on First Friday. So there's a great deal of knowledge up here. Oh, of course, and Commissioner-elect Kuliannis back there is waving his hand. He helps, and he will be on the commission. And I would assume he's going to continue helping, is that correct? Okay, so you've got a commitment on his part, yeah.
Like Eisner helps us.
Okay, so my point is, I think everybody is very supportive of what the Merchants Associations do, but we also recognize that we have the public that we have to satisfy as well. So roll call, please.
Commissioner Cullias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Oh, we've got another item on that, okay.
The second one is the, the Sunday markets. The only, I mean, Saturday market. The only thing I want to bring up is something we did last year. Remember, we were coming out of COVID. We did something we usually don't do for special events, and we allowed, allowed two of these days, and they will conflict this year, for the March 11th. It does, is at the same time as the Fine Arts and Crafts Show down in Craig Park. And of course, this weekend, as you saw, it's on the same time. The November one's on the same time as Christmas Parade. I saw or heard of no problems from the Christmas Parade, because we were all there just a few days ago. I didn't hear any from the police of the two events being an issue. We had probably the biggest crowd that we ever had for it, I heard of no issues. I can't remember back to the Arts and Crafts Show, but we did see from just a few days ago, all of us was in there, rode it and saw with that crowd. I didn't hear of one complaint on it being on the same day and stuff. So I just, we did it last year coming out of COVID, but I wanted to bring it up because they want to go forward with it. Next year on the dates, they feel the continuity of moving it to a different Saturday in those two months would, would, would deal with the continuity of the event at the same time. So they want to go forward with it. Again, I have had no complaints, but I wanted to bring that forward and notify you that these dates will be on the same day as two of those events for the coming year.
Thank you. Let's go to public comments. Are there any comments on, on the second Saturday market schedule? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
And we do not have anyone attending at this time.
Okay. Let me just say a couple of things on that. I understand what the sensitivity is with the, the second Saturday market on that weekend being the same day as the Fine Arts. The Fine Arts has historically used that location for vendor parking, or at least their artist parking. And then in the last couple of years, there's been a little bit of a change that some of these dates, like the Fine Art Festival, has been fixed on that particular weekend, on that Saturday and Sunday. And then the, and I, so that, that happened. So I've, I've spoken to Ms. Rodriguez, I know what the Merchants Association position is. I've also spoken to Ms. Hungaville of the Chamber of Commerce. And I haven't gotten to it yet, but I think that there's a solution that I've bounced off both of them, which is there's an additional parking. I don't want to mention the location, I haven't spoken to the owner yet, but I, I think it's a very viable alternative. Mrs. Hungaville believes that, she doesn't believe that location would be acceptable for her artist parking, which would solve the problem. So I'm hoping that between now and the end of the year, I'll have made contact and had a discussion with the people that own the parking lot. And then, and then we, the city manager and his team will negotiate a contract very similar to what we did with the two parking lots behind Flagship, and also the parking lot for the, across the street from the Greek Orthodox Church there on Orange Street. So I'm hoping that we can accommodate that and that we would resolve this. So at this point, I don't have an issue with that particular date. I think Ms. Hungaville is okay with it. She was going to try and be here tonight, but she had some other meeting that she was going to go to, and she thought she might be late here. So that's my comments. Let me go to Vice Mayor Lunt.
I have no comment.
Commissioner Carr?
No comment.
Commissioner Eisner?
I just want peace. I want peace between.
That's a good word. Commissioner Cullias?
I mean, I don't think it's necessarily great to have the second Saturday, March 11th, the same day as the Fine Arts Festival. I'd like to really have that be the showcase city that weekend, but if it's, I haven't spoken in gene or the chamber about it, so I don't see there being an issue.
Right.
So.
I know there's been conversation between the chamber and the merchants on this. And, and again, the peace is a very good word here, and let's see if we can continue working together and get this resolved in another way. We did public comments, we had commission comments. May I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion approved.
Second.
Unless there's further discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Cullias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr? Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes?
Yes. Thank you, ladies. Okay, well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you. The way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point, and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. going to go to, and she thought she might be late here. So that's my comments. Let me go to Vice Mayor Lunt.
I have no comment.
Commissioner Carr.
No comment.
Commissioner Eisner.
I just want peace. I want peace between.
That's a good word. Commissioner Kulyas.
Peace for talk. Peace for talk.
I mean, I don't think it's necessarily great to have the second Saturday, March 11th, the same day as the Fine Arts Festival. I'd like to really have that be the showcase city that weekend, but if it's, I haven't spoken in gene or the chamber about it, so I don't see there being an issue.
Right.
So.
I know there's been conversation between the chamber and the merchants on this. And again, the peace is a very good word here, and let's see if we can continue working together and get this resolved in another way. We did public comments. We had commission comments. May I have a motion and a second, please?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Unless there's further discussion, roll call.
Commissioner Kulyas.
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner.
Yes.
Commissioner Carr. Vice Mayor Lunt.
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. Thank you, ladies. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way everything is advertised, we have to wait until 7:30 to begin our ordinances and resolutions. So what we're going to do is recess the meeting at this point and then reconvene at 7:30 sharp. So I'm going to recess at 7:10. Okay. Well, according to our rules of procedure and the way things are, thank you, the way
Meeting at seven thirty.
Been around.
We're gonna start on the ordinances and resolutions. We'll start with item fifteen, the Land Development Code amendments and the Comprehensive Plan amendments. We had deferred item A and C, which is the ordinance concerning annexations, and C was a Land Development Code amendment concerning coastal high hazards. So we're gonna start with item fifteen B, which is an amendment for the application process. I'm gonna ask Mr. Salzman if he could read the ordinance by title, please.
Ordinance twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three. An ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zone, Zoning and Land Development Code, Article twelve, Section two oh five point zero zero, general provisions, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. That's ordinance number twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, read by title only on second reading. It was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on November second, twenty-twenty-two, and November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Salzman. City Manager, of course.
Yes, Renee Vincent.
Thank you. This is ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-three. So the only changes to this ordinance between first reading last night and today is per discussion and consensus, we removed the ors from the, in the Order of Operations in paragraphs E two and E five. And other than that, it's unchanged from last night.
Okay. Are there any, is that it, Ms. Vincent?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jumper, are there any public comments by remote access?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs, anything?
No.
Emails, okay. I'm gonna ask the Commission whether they have any questions concerning this item. Vice Mayor Lunt?
None.
Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Eisner?
None.
Commissioner Kulyas? Okay, may I have a motion and a second to approve, please?
Motion to approve ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-three.
Second.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiatus?
Yes. Item D, this is the Conditional Use Ordinance, twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-five. Mr. Salzman, if you could read this one by title, please.
Ordinance number twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-five, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article twelve, Sections two oh nine point zero zero and two oh nine point zero one, conditional uses and review criteria, providing for severability, providing for the inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. That is ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-five, read by title only on second reading. This ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on November second, twenty-twenty-two, and November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you. City Manager, of course.
Ms. Vincent, we could talk about anything new for second reading?
There's no, nothing new on this ordinance.
Okay, I'm gonna ask the Commission, I'm sorry, the public, whether there's any public concerning this item, any public comments. Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments concerning this item?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do have raised hand, I'll allow the first person in.
Okay.
Good evening. Peter Delakis, five-one-four Ashland Avenue. From what I can see on this conditional use thing, it sounds like it's pretty logical, but as for changing things and reviewing things, I'd like to go to page three of four, two oh nine point oh one, Standards for Review of Conditional Uses, item D. The conditional use will not result in significant adverse impacts to the environment or historical resources. My recommendation would be to take the word significant. Significant gives a lot of leeway as to what environmental or historical impact could be on a particular property or site. So one may consider something significant being like what they have to cut a canal through a property. But maybe you have to do some other activities on a property that someone would deem not significant, yet it still has an adverse impact. So it just gives me heartburn a little bit that we can't open that up more to interpretation. And then as far as tying conditional uses to site plans and some of the other things that have been proposed so far this evening and last night, I think we're on a good step, but I think we also have to remember that these are all steps moving forward. We try them out, we see how they work. If we find things that don't fit or aren't quite matching the intent of what the ordinance is to be, we need to be open and flexible to adjusting those in the future. Thank you, gentlemen. I know it's been a long night, the last couple nights. I appreciate all your service and work, and nice to see Mr. Salzman there. God bless you all. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delakis. Mr. Jumper?
Have any other raised hands at this time?
Thank you very much. Let's go to Commission comments. And Ms. Jacobs, I'm gonna assume we have no other emails for this evening? None? Okay, all right, I won't ask you again.
That's okay.
Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any questions?
Not really. Now that Mr. Delakis has brought it up, though, significant actually does leave it open to interpretation. I mean, so does adversely affect adjoining property values, which we know is completely hard to determine upfront anyway, so I kind of skipped that part when I, on first reading. I would go along with it anyway, but if we could, if we could get rid of significant in that statement, I'd feel better as well.
Okay, so your position for right now is to go along as it's written, but then consider removing the significant as a later date or adjusting it somehow so that it's less open to interpretation?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
I've got no questions, Mayor.
Okay.
And I'd like to, with the same thing as Vice Mayor, go along with it right now, but I would like this board to consider in the future having the special events be up to three days instead of two. I mean, you know, weekends, weekends could be, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
On conditional use, we're talking about the food trucks, that's what you're talking about, right?
Yes.
That's a little later.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. I think that the Planning Department is receptive to recommendations, and I would, if you would like to include that aspect of tightening up the conditional use, this is pretty much rolling it back to where we were prior to the change that was done in twenty nineteen. Ms. Vincent explained that. But if I, if I could get a motion to approve with some language of asking the Planning Department to look at the wording of significant and tightening it up in some way so it's less open to interpretation, that would be fine. I'd like to get a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
And a second.
Based on what the mayor just said.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Vice Mayor, I'm gonna ask, there's room for discussion right now. Vice Mayor Lunt, you look like you'd like to say something.
So if I understand, the motion is to approve this with current wording, with the expectation that planning is going to look at it later on?
Yeah, the wording's significant, and seeing if that can be made to be less interpretive.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Do you have another idea?
No, it's, it's all right.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that, Ms. Vincent, you're okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiatus?
Yes. Now, we didn't give you a timeframe or anything like that, but I'm sure you're, we've got some of these others coming back to us, I think, February timeframe or something like that, so, okay.
We can, we can always find some things that need to be amended that we can...
You know, we brought together the most important ones that we thought was certain to commissioners, but this can go back on the list, and I say, a lot of these, we, you know, we need to try and look at, and we can make changes as we go along later and stuff, so that'll be one we'll put on to look at and see if we can find some language that satisfies everybody.
I, I would like to do something with that adversely impacting property values as well, because that's really subjective, so we'll take the opportunity to look at both of those.
That's excellent, thank you. Item E, which is the amending the food, mobile food dispensing vehicle, which is basically food trucks. Mr. Salzman, if you could read that ordinance by title, please?
Ordinance number twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-six, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code, Article four, Section fifty-six point zero zero, temporary uses and Section fifty-six point zero five, mobile food dispensing vehicles temporary, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. That is ordinance number twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-six, read on second reading by title only. This ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on November second, twenty-twenty-two, and November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Salzman. City Manager, of course.
Yes, I'll, Renee, go into some of the changes, and we, this is one of the ones we had a lot of changes, so if there's missed one, or there's, is up for discussion on a change, we're welcome. We tried to put in over a day all the ones we could, but were, you know, were able to talk, and it wouldn't be a significant change for little minor adjustments from what we've done. So go over the changes we made from last night, and then we can talk about any additional.
So per discussion last night, under the fifty-six oh five K subparagraph one A, which is for the non-residential property, so the commercial properties hosting a mobile food truck, we changed the, the amount of time between events from ninety days to thirty days, and then under the residential events, we included a, we added two, you know, a one and a two underneath of that subparagraph B to speak to establishing that the fee will be twenty-five percent of the temporary use fee as established in Section two forty-six zero zero. So that just references to the, the existing fee is a hundred dollars under the fee structure, so this will be twenty-five percent of that. If that gets adjusted, we'll just do, you know, accordingly. So that was a way to not have to go amend that. And then number two is to provide a little context regarding the approval process and state in the code that the technical review committee may conduct an expedited review and approve the permit without a formal meeting, so that puts a, puts it on a faster track. So those are the changes that, I think that was everything from last night, but if not, let's discuss. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments concerning this ordinance on the mobile food dispensing Mr. Jumper, are there any public comments concerning this item?
If anyone would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jumper. Vice Mayor Lunt, do you have any questions?
Uh, none, thank you.
Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I just wanna remind the, the public about, we've been going through these pretty quickly tonight. This is the second reading. We spent multiple hours last night discussing this with staff in a public meeting. So the second readings tend to be much quicker, because we've hammered out a lot of the questions already. So there's a lot of important things we're approving and reviewing tonight, and it seems like it's going quickly, but there's a reason for that, because we, we did spend multiple hours last night going through that. I think Commissioner Kulya brought up the three days versus two days. I've got no objection to that from the business side. If there's, I, I don't know if that's a substantial change, though. Would that be considered a substantial change?
I, I don't think that's, no, I think that if there's consensus tonight for that, I think we can just add that to the, to the ordinance this evening.
I guess that's under K one A, right?
Right.
Where it says, where it says...
Each event may last up to two days.
May last up to two days. If we got the consensus and stuff to make it to three, then we can change it to three.
Commercial, for commercial.
For commercial, correct.
Yes. I've got no issues with it.
Okay, Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. As been said before, we did cover this last night. I have nothing to add or subtract from it. I don't have an issue with changing it from two days to three days. I don't know many people that are gonna need it for three days, but I don't think it should be a hindrance.
Commissioner Kulyas?
No, I just, just wanted to add that there are three-day weekends, and there might be certain events that these businesses do hold that, you know, ideally, I don't think someone's gonna wanna have it for Saturday, Sunday, and Monday. Probably use it for Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so just a consideration.
I, I know your city manager's always, in this particular environment, very accommodating. Do you see any issues with the three days versus two?
No, and again, like I said, of everything the change we made, we need to see how it goes along. If there are problems or something comes up with it, either way, or additions or subtractions, then we can come back to you. But I, you know, I don't think we'll know until we do it and try it. I don't see any right now, so.
Fair enough.
I don't see a problem with changing that.
Okay, thank you. If that's the case, if there's no other questions, may I have a motion?
Make a motion.
With the change?
Yeah, make a motion to approve with the staff changes. In addition to that, in Section K, number one, subsection A, little A, to move two days to three days, for each event may last up to three days.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiatus?
Yes, okay. Item fifteen F, which is the amendment to the ordinance concerning the SMART code, specifically the hotel height. Mr. Salzman, if you could read the ordinance by title, please?
Ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-seven, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending Appendix B of the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, a transect-based infill code for the sponge docks and community redevelopment area by amending tables five B one through five B twelve, specific transect zone height standards, and Section four point five point two, accessory unit maximum area, providing for severability and providing for an effective date. That is ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-seven, read on second reading by title only. This ordinance was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on November second, twenty-twenty-two, and November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
City Manager, of course.
Yes, I just wanna let you know, I have no hyperlink to the, to this one or the one that was before the...
Say it a little louder.
I have no hyperlink to this one or the one before the mobile.
The computer's not...
No, no, you, you just can't click on it to open it up at all, there's no backup on it.
You go to the title fifteen?
Yes, no, I know where to go, I'm just saying, it just doesn't, it stays...
Just last night's stuff?
It's last night.
There's no hyperlink, because there's no changes to the document.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know if Judy was able to update the two ordinances that I sent out earlier today, so that might be the...
It's in your email that you sent out.
It is in the email, yes.
Okay, where were we? We had your presentation, Ms. Vincent, is that right?
Ms. Vincent?
Yes, and this, this ordinance, twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-seven, speaks to the requiring the hotel heights to be, the special heights to be conditional uses to be approved by the board, and there's no changes on this from last night.
Thank you. Are there any public comments concerning this?
Good evening, Board. My name is John Kolyanis, ten twenty Peninsula Avenue. I'm speaking as a public citizen, not as a P and Z member, having voted on this ordinance change. I think it's a great idea to, and it's moving in the right direction, to go ahead and approve this change. But I, I think that we need to go further than this later, once we have finished our, our comp plan, our land development, strategic planning, and also when the Greek town has finished their, their study that we have helped supplement. You know, I trust this board, and obviously, I trust the board now, and I'll trust it in, in April as well, that we are gonna be apprehensive in raising heights above those that are stated in the planning, are planned and by right. But we've seen boards that have gone adverse to public opinion. We've seen it last year. We saw hundreds of people coming forward against a project with relatively no support in the public for a project, and we did raise heights. I know there were other issues in that whole project, but we've seen that happen. So therefore, I am going to study, and I'm going to propose something that I would like to have, that I'm gonna spearhead, once I'm a, a commissioner, to have referendum on height increases. That, you know, we go to referendum for purchasing properties, and that's obviously important. But nothing is more important right now than preserving and protecting our town. So before we, if we have heights by right of three stories, and then some three, three people from this town, and I understand I'll be one of those possibly three people, but three people in this town could go six stories high, and who knows how much higher, and could permanently change the town, and, and in my opinion, not in a better way. So I'm going to, to move later, I would like to get it done in the next two years before the mayor steps down, to have a charter amendment change that would force referendums on height increases above those that are planned, and let the citizens decide directly if they want to go high and have that kind of density. And then therefore, we would have none of these issues that we have with now getting special consoles and all this other stuff. It would have avoided all that, and the public would have had their time on the, on those issues. So you are for, not forewarned, for informed.
Thank you, Commissioner-elect Kolyanis. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access public comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to questions by the Commission. Vice Mayor Lunt?
I'm fine with that, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Carr?
None.
Commissioner Eisner? Commissioner Kulyas?
No questions.
I, I mean, I think Mr. Kolyanis's comments are well-taken, you know, there's a variety of ways of dealing with this. I would welcome him, once he's in office or even now, to sit down with Ms. Vincent and the staff, and the city manager in particular, and have a discussion on that, and look at what the ups and downs and the pros and cons are of that. So I, it, it, I, I think it's feasible, but that's something that, as you're saying, that's your initiative that you'd like to embark on, so I welcome you to do that. If there's no questions, then I'd like to have a motion and a second to approve, please.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash twenty-seven.
Second.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiatus?
Yes. Okay, that ends item fifteen. We're gonna go to item sixteen, which is designation of the floodplain administrator. Mr. Salzman, if I can have you read that ordinance by title?
Ordinance twenty, twenty-two dash thirty-four, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Ordinance 2022-34, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6, Section 6-64.3, duties and powers of the floodplain administrator, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. That's Ordinance 2022-34, read on second reading by title only. This was published by title only in the Tampa Bay Times on November 30th, 2022.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, of course.
Yes, we're bringing this back for second reading. We had a rather extensive discussion on the first reading. I've got our building director, Kevin Powell, and our police chief, Scott Young, who helped put this together. And really, this is something I'm very proud of because I think we're going to be at the forefront. I think we're going to be a model. We're on the beginning of the changes that being suggested with emergency management, with floodplain management. So we're going to be the first to embark into the going trend. And luckily, we've had, we've got good directors, and, and we go through the process. I think we're an excellent individual, and we all know from the last meeting how many, how much money that the taxpayers are reaping from our pleasant, from our present floodplain system, and this will just keep it going or not better and stuff. And I've got both of them here. If there's any further questions, but we really have nothing to add to the ordinance on second reading. But they're available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there, let's see, Mr. Powell, do you want to make your presentation? Or is that what the plan is?
I would just open up if you have any questions.
Do you have any comments or...
No, Mayor. We've made no changes to this ordinance, and we're here for any questions by the board.
Why don't you just give us a brief summary of what the changes are? Because it was since, it's been a little while since we did the first reading.
Yeah.
And then that way, if there's anybody that wishes to make a comment, they'll understand what this is about. Go ahead.
Okay, so Ordinance 2022-34 is changing the designation of the floodplain administrator. Currently, it falls under the building official. The building official is designated as the floodplain administrator or is designee, which we will normally always have a designee for that position to take those duties off of the building official. So we currently have our floodplain coordinator that is doing that, that job now, which is basically, she's the, for lack of better wording, is the floodplain administrator at this time. So what we're doing is we're taking the designation off of the building official and putting it to the city manager so that we can put that position in, in any department. It doesn't have to just be in the building department because it's, it's growing from just a, a building issue. It's growing more into emergency management and building. So by having the city manager designate where it's at, I think it's going to be better for the community as to where we put that person and who that person is, and not just, it's the building official with all of their additional duties that they have. So that's where we're at, is just changing the designation of that for the city manager to appoint that person.
Okay. But just for clarification, for tonight's action, we're placing it into the fire department?
Wherever the city manager is going to designate that.
We'll be doing that next time.
Right, that's going to be the city manager's designation.
All right.
Once this, if this is approved tonight.
Okay, understand. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access items?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, commission comments. Vice Mayor Lunt?
As I said last time when we went through this, I'm appreciative of what we've done so far. I'm sure the residents are appreciative of the fact that their flood insurance rates are going down, and, and this will actually improve upon that, I hope. So I'm all for it as it stands.
Okay, Commissioner Carr?
Yeah, I'm in support of this. I want to say thank you to our building official and also to our head of building department, and also our fire chief, and then again, Megan, for all the hard work that she's done for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm also in support of this. Want to thank you for the hard work. Really appreciate it. I think it's a smart way to go, and I wish you the best of luck. You as well, Megan. Appreciate you.
Commissioner Koulias?
Just want to thank you all involved and helping put this all together for the city. Thank you.
May I have a motion and a second to approve, please?
Motion to approve Ordinance 2022-34, as it stands.
Second.
There's, there's a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Koulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticios.
Yes, thank you. Okay, item 17, Resolution 2022-46, which is a reorganization of fire rescue. Mr. Salzman, if you could read the resolution by title, please.
Resolution 2022-46, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing structural and organizational changes in the Tarpon Springs Fire Rescue Department, including the activation of an additional position, approving recommendations of the city manager regarding such structural and organizational changes, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Okay, thank you. If there's, okay, we've got that. Okay, city manager, of course.
Again, this is the nuts and bolts to put it together. This is the actual new job, the change from a floodplain coordinator to emergency management coordinator slash floodplain administrator. New job. It's got the new job description. Again, it's not adding a position. It's changing a present position. And where it goes, it does not detract from anything that that position was due now. So there's not going to be, as, as he's here to attest, there will not be any deficit in the building department for this happening. We extensively looked at where it should go. Right now, you can't find a place to have both these together. But individually, both jobs individually, we're around our range 21. So that's why we decided to make it 22, because obviously, for one of these positions, there's a 21 everywhere. This may change into coming, this is something that may come back in a couple of years when I believe this is going to be something that we're going to see in other cities establishing. We're not sure where they're going to establish the salary range. It may be something we need to adjust to compensate for, for them later, but for right now, where we are now, the 22 is the perfect place for it to go and, and the range for it to go. This was a lot of study, a lot of looking at the other cities and the, the two individual positions, because right now, they don't have one. But I bet you in the coming times, his compadres in other cities, they're going to be start to move and say something like this, or having two individuals. We feel we can get the job done without the position. This is one of those positions. If you remember last year, when we had department heads look over the next, you know, two to five years, what positions they would need, this was one of, one of his. But this will alleviate that one, and as you know, there's a lot of others on the list of need that we have to space out over a period. This will, this will give us one less and still accomplish everything we want to do, and again, hopefully, even get more money back from the citizens. So we're very confident this is going to work, and we've done the research to put it in the right place. So we need the board to, to approve this, this new position, the job description, and the placement in the organization.
For clarification, before we get to Chief Scott Young, before clarification, we're not approving a new position. We're, well, actually, we're netting zero. In other words, we're moving.
Correct.
One from the building department and moving it to the, to the fire department and changing the job description and the job range as well.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Senator Scott, do you have anything to add to what I said?
I really don't have anything else to add to what the city manager said. I think this is a great positive move. Again, it comes from FEMA, has a recommendation also. I have mentioned it to a couple of the other departments in the area, and they are thinking the same way as like the city manager said. So I think we are kind of leading the way on this. So I think you'll see it in other departments before long.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any public comments by remote access?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk.
He didn't have anything. Nothing. He's waiting.
And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jump. Let's go to questions by the commission. Vice Mayor Lunt?
I have no questions.
Okay. Commissioner Carr?
So in the future, did Kevin just give up part of his budget to the fire chief?
Well, it's a wash, so. He's not worried about it.
Just want to make sure. I know Kevin's going to come knocking here around budget season.
No, he is not.
I know the fire chief is, so. I've got no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner? Commissioner Koulias?
No question.
Okay. If there's no further questions, may I have a motion to approve in a second, please?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, I've had a lengthy conversation with the city manager on this to understand as far as a couple of different things, as far as the net zero and also the salary range and everything. So I'm comfortable with that. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Koulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticios.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 18, amending the charter for including a strategic plan, the implementation, and also budget priorities. Mr. Salzman, if you could read that ordinance by title, please.
Ordinance Number 2022-31, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, submitting to the electors of the City of Tarpon Springs, proposed amendments to Section 8 of Article 2 of the City Charter to provide for a public hearing in no later than June 30 of each budget cycle for budget priorities, to provide for the implementation of a strategic plan for the city to be updated every three fiscal years, providing for severability, excuse me, providing for conflict, providing for codification, providing for an effective date hereof. That is Ordinance Number 2022-31, read by title only on second reading. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on November 30th, 2022.
Thank you. Are there, city manager, of course, go ahead.
Yeah, again, these were two important things. We talked about at meetings and, and of such importance that we wanted to have it in our charter. So this is the second reading of the ordinance to get it. Obviously, you'll see a ballot language down the road, a couple of items down to actually put it on, but these are two important things that we want the public to review and hopefully, put in place, again, because of their importance, dealing with conducting public hearings to give the public a chance early in the budget process, and of course, the strategic plan, the importance and the importance of reviewing it and updating it so we don't have to go through a long update process. So this is the mechanism to get it on the ballot and hopefully, get it approved by the residents and move forward, have the path for future commissions and city officials to move forward with.
Thank you. Are there any public comments concerning this item? Mr. Jump, are there any public comments by remote access?
And if anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to commission comments, or questions, actually. Vice Mayor Lunt?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Carr?
I'll have a question when it comes down to the ballot language. I just want a clarification on that there's going to be a public hearing after the board goes through the budget as well, too? That it just doesn't eliminate that? I think there's...
Well, that's required by statute.
Okay, just want to make sure that that's clear.
That we don't eliminate the second part of it?
Yeah.
Okay. It's part of statute, would prohibit that from happening. Okay, that's it. Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
I have just a quick question. How are we going to get this information out to the public prior to the referendum?
I think basically, this particular election in March is going to be somewhat...
I know, light.
Quiet, if you will. We don't have any commissioners that are running. And I think it's going to be up to the commission to be informative and factual. I don't think you can take a side on this thing. I think you need to remain neutral. I would suggest if you're interested in having discussions with residents and the public about this, that you consult with Ms. Jacobs first, so she can make sure, and actually, our city attorney, to make sure that we don't stub our toe on anything that we might say publicly that may not be allowed for something like this. Okay.
And we had planned maybe, again, what we can put out is facts. We can't put out, it's very restrictive with what we can put out as a city, but we, again, Irene's worked on that before, stuff to put, to lay out the facts without the opinion out there, which we're allowed to do, and have that available by the means of city getting it out as information. Both on this item and on the, the next item, on the Ross property purpose, on both of those things. And we'll make sure we're copacetic with the statute, that it's just facts put in out. We'd review that and then give that fact sheet or information out for the public. But the restriction is what you can do, but we'd work with our attorney to, to make sure we're following the election laws and to do that.
Well, I'm pleased with the fact that we're going to have the input from the public prior to the making of the budget. And I have no further questions. I was just curious, like I said, on how, I didn't know whether...
I understand. We need, yes.
Yeah, I didn't know how, whether we were going to put this in on a water bill or whether they were just looking for the commission to get the message out there, or would there be something in Connect Tarpon? I, I mean, that's all.
Probably all three.
Oh, okay.
Let me put it this way. I think it's as important for the city manager to help in this process and the staff because of the Ross property and the importance of the drainage to that entire area. So I think that there, and we've got three months to get the word out, if you will, middle of March, I believe, or sometimes around that is the election. We just have to be careful and not get too taken by advocating things and just, again, I, I'm sure at some point, we'll probably get some help from the city attorney to provide us some guidance and Ms. Jacobs as well, to make sure we don't cross that line.
Well, I'm, I'm fine. I just want to get the facts out there, but I know it's going to be, as we all do, it's just going to be a very light election when you're voting for no one except the referendum.
We had a referendum that I was involved in, which was unrelated to an election back in 95, and the only thing we had available was putting full-page ads in the newspaper that the commission had to approve. And, yeah, there was, it was not favored by everybody. It had to do with the hospital issue. And, and you had to be real, real careful of not advocating one, one side or another as a city government. So I, again, I, I'm, you know, we're going to have to defer to our professionals here in that matter, but to that, until we get, we'll get to that point when we'll have that information.
Okay, thank you. That's, that was my only question.
Okay. Commissioner Koulias?
No comments.
Okay. Okay, if there aren't any questions, I'd like to have a motion to approve in a second, please.
Motion to approve Ordinance 2022-31.
Second.
All righty. As far as any discussion, is there any discussion by any commissioner? The, the only thing I want to say for myself, and it is a discussion, is that this is, quite frankly, we haven't gotten there. March is going to be the proof and the pudding, but this started for me, as Mr. Koulianis had gotten up there, he had an initiative that he wanted to take, and strategic plan was one of mine back in April of 2020 when we started talking about it. And eventually, the commission at that time saw the importance of this, followed through, and, and we had, we got the help that we needed with the Institute of Government out of South Florida and also the collaborative laboratories at St. Petersburg College. It was a very lengthy process, detailed, getting our residents involved. And ultimately, we created the plan. We'll be in the process of implementing it. And now, what we're trying to do with this is actually establish the importance. So it'll continue in perpetuity unless the charter changes, of course. And of course, that assumes that this would get approved. We had a plan way back in, in the 90s, also done by the Institute of Government. Over time, that just, for whatever reason, it went away. Similarly, with the comprehensive plan, there was a requirement, state requirement, that it get updated every five years. That went away in 2011, and there was an assumption that the, that the communities felt that the comprehensive plan was important enough that they would continue up with it. But given the way things are, and a lot of things get thrown at you, it's out of sight, out of mind. And I think with something like the charter kind of sitting on your shoulder reminding... kind of sitting on your shoulder reminding you that these documents have to be updated, I think that would be a real plus and certainly guarantee their continuation. I think a strategic plan for any organization, especially one that's fifty, seventy million dollar annual budget, is extremely important. So, I'm, I'm very happy that we've got here for this. Um, if there's no other, uh, comments, I'd like to, um, ask for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticios.
Yes. Okay, next is item nineteen, uh, concerning the Ross property purchase and its referendum. Mr. Salsman, if I can ask that you read that ordinance by title, please.
Ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, submitting to the electors of the City of Tarpon Springs, a referendum question and ballot title for the purchase of the Henry Ross property for stormwater management and land preservation, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. That is ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five, read by title only on second reading. This was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Salsman. City manager, of course, do you have any-
Um, this is the second reading, we've, we've talked about this property and its importance, I have nothing to add to it, um, um, and go forward to approval, so we can proceed with the process, we need to, to get it on the referendum.
Okay. Um, are there any public comments concerning this particular item? This has to do with purchasing property on South Florida Avenue for preservation and drainage. Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Jump. Um, commission comments, uh, questions, actually, Mr. Vice Mayor Lunt.
Um, is it possible for you, uh, excuse me, Mark, to, to run through the financial justifications? Just, just as sort of an, another update to the, to the residents, because there's a big difference between the appraised value of the property and the, the purchase price of the property, and I think it was you I discussed how that resolved with. If you could just kind of mention that again, that would be fantastic.
Yes, uh, how we looked at it, um, there, there's two things to consider, not only the land, um, which appraised at four ninety-one, but the important thing about this entire deal and this purchase is the easement we're gonna get, and if you're talking about where is the, the easement, it's absolutely vital, has the last piece in the process with this stormwater and affect the whole neighborhood on the other side. So, we're not only, we're not only obtaining this piece of land, but we're, we're obtaining the easement on another piece of land, um, to complete this process, so if, if you went our normal process, twenty-five percent of the appraised value, um, and then kinda add the value, the value of those together, or what, or what that land for the easement would appraise at, and that, um, you're, you're pretty close to, to that area. The land was up for sale for over a million dollars. Um, um, it's the advantage of the homeowner to have this preserved and not have a bunch of little homes try to be crammed on this property. It's to our benefit, not only to preserve land, but for the, the stormwater for that entire area of Florida Avenue, so with all those factors together, um, the price is a very reasonable price, especially for what on the open market, um, a developer could come in, put, put with, buy right, little house in the middle of that stuff, and completely, uh, keep us from using it for the stormwater we need to alleviate the, the problem out there, which would go to other methods, which are far more expensive to try to deal with the stormwater, if it even be done, so where you're going a little bit more of the value, you have to realize those factors, uh, coming up to the fair price.
Thank you. Anything else, Vice Mayor Lunt?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, Commissioner Carr?
No, I'm happy to support this.
Commissioner Eisner?
Happy to support it.
Happy to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Cuyas. I don't have any other comments to add. If that's the case, then let's, um, have a motion and a second to approve.
Motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-five.
Second.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticios.
Yes. Okay, the next item is the resolution calling for an election. Mr. Salsman, if you could read that by title, please.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-one, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, calling for the municipal general referendum election to be held on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, for the purpose of electing two commissioners to serve a term of three years each, providing for establishment of the ballot title and substance for three referendum questions, one authorizing the city to purchase a parcel of property from Henry Ross to be used for stormwater and land preservation, one question amending charter section eight of article two to provide for a public hearing no later than June thirtieth of each budget cycle for budget priorities, and one question amending charter section eight of article two to provide for the implementation of a strategic plan for the city to be updated every three fiscal years, providing for said election, submitting said referendum questions to the voters, providing for notice to the supervisor of elections, and providing for the effective date hereof.
Thank you, Mr. Salsman. Uh, Ms. Jacobs, I'm gonna go to you on this, would you like to offer some comments?
Sure. Um, this resolution calls, uh, for the election in ballot language. As you see on questions two and three, we split those, um, so in case one fail, they, you know, it wouldn't be combined. Um, this resolution was reviewed by Attorney Salsman and was legally sufficient.
Thank you. Let me go to public comments. Um, are there any comments concerning this item? Yes, ma'am. If, if you'd like to come forward, we have to have you on the microphone, and if you can give us your name and address, please.
Hello, good morning, good evening. My name is Afrika Ingram, and I live in Clearwater, Florida, and, um, I own property here, but my comment was, what is gonna be built there? A retaining pond for the water that come from over on this side of town? Question.
Okay. City manager, of course, can you, did you understand the question?
The property you finna purchase, you finna put a retaining pond there for the water that come from this part of town over there, that's my question.
No.
Oh, so-
Could you kind of, I didn't quite hear-
Well, again, what, what, what that piece-
I don't get it.
Yeah, that piece of land is off Florida Avenue. Um, if you're going on Florida Avenue, it's on the east side of Florida Avenue. Uh, where the problem of stormwater and drainage and stuff are those neighborhoods, um, in that area, and, uh, you know, we will have to have a, a stormwater engineer, um, do the plans of what we're doing there, but again, it's not our property now. He gives, the person who owns the property gives us permission to go on there and help things for that area of town, but, um, that's specific for that area off Florida Avenue.
It's on the east side of Florida Avenue, and the water is coming from all around over here to there, right?
Yeah.
Is, that's what I'm getting, right? So therefore, I'm asking a question, where is, where the pipes gonna be? You gotta, I'm, I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, that's when, that's when we have control of the land, that we have our experts, um, figure out the best method and, and bring that back forward, um, for the plan of what we're gonna do. The property's not ours now, so all we can do is maintain it and stuff, so that will be something coming after we get the property.
And also, on the other side of town, where, um, I guess you can say, um, Montlouche King and Diston and Levis, you haven't went over there and built any, what you wanna call them, water retaining ponds? So where is that water going?
The area over by Diston, is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, but when you bring this water, where is it gonna go? It floods already, so I'm asking a question.
Let me, um-
Where is the water going when you bring more water on to the, um, I don't wanna say that land, but in the area?
Right.
Because you have more than five places over there that floods in more water over?
We, I, this evening, um, we don't have, I, I'll, what I'm gonna try and say is that the, the, this property is out, uh, south of Sunset Beach that we're talking about tonight, way out there. It wouldn't affect anything on Diston. Your interest is in Diston.
My interest is in-
In, in that surrounding area, right, I understand.
It do floods, but that water have to go-
We, we have a master stormwater plan that, that, with, there, the answer to your question is within that plan. We don't have it this evening, but we have people at the city during the day. If, um, if you gave us your name and address, um, well, or if you, uh, could call tomorrow, I guess, would that be the best thing?
Yeah.
If you could call City Hall tomorrow, um, I can give you the phone number, or if you, out there on the table against the wall, there's a card that's got all the phone numbers on it. If you could call the general phone number and, um, ask for, I don't know what time I'll be there, but the city manager will be there, and just ask to be contacted, and then we'll try and put you in touch with the right person that could answer that question for you.
Thank you.
I, I don't have an answer for you this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand and you'll be allowed into talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Um, commission comments, Vice Mayor Lunt?
Um, so I understand through the city clerk that, uh, and through, uh, our attorney that this meets legal justification. Um, I have a question on the wording. It says, um, you know, to paraphrase, June thirtieth of each budget cycle for budget priorities. That, to me, reads kinda weird, but, you know, I'm an English guy, so it's like, should be for establishment of budget priorities, but if it's legally okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. Uh, the only other thing that I have to comment on is I feel really odd signing something that puts me on a referendum. I don't, I was looking at it going, do I need to recuse myself from signing this because it's got my name on it?
No, you do not.
Well, if I don't, then I'm fine. No more questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salsman. Commissioner Carr? Commissioner Eisner?
I sit next to him, too. Um, no, no questions.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Uh, no comments.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with the ballot language. Um, if there's, um, no other questions, may I have a motion and a second to approve, please?
Motion approved, Mayor.
Second.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticios.
Yes. Item twenty-one, which is resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven, which is a reimbursement policy for legal, um, defenses, uh, cost. Uh, Mr. Salsman, if I can have you read that resolution by title, please.
Resolution twenty twenty-two dash forty-seven, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, adopting a reimbursement policy with regard to support and legal defense, providing for severability clause, providing for repeal of resolution or policies inconsistent herewith, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. Uh, city manager, of course, do you want to introduce this?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and introduce it. Um, obviously, um, we've got circumstances going on at the present time. The one thing, um, in dealing with other issues with our other temporary attorney, Ms. Kardashian, um, a question was asked if we had a legal defense policy such as this, and of course, my answer was no. So what Ms. Kardashian has done is, is first of all, she sent me a couple model policies that looked real good, um, from other places, and what I asked her to do, um, since we did not have a policy, it could be important that we have that policy in place for her, if she could take those policies and elements of the policies and put them in a, in one, um, for the City of Tarpon Springs, molding for the City of Tarpon Springs. Um, she's written you, she wrote a cover sheet of the, of the process and, uh, what she was involved with, and I think she has put together, um, a resolution, um, a good resolution, um, open for discussion for this board tonight, so we have something in place in case the circumstances come up that we have to make a decision. Um, and it's difficult to make a decision if you don't have a policy, um, to make that decision with, so. That's all right, Irene's telling me I'm-
Our, our cut off.
So, so, um, I'm, I'm with that, um, the resolution is presented, it gives us, it gives us, um, what we needed, and, uh, looking for any input for the board, but I encourage we adopt something to have some policy in place. This is not only covering, this is not only covering, um, city commissioners, but also other city officials and stuff, so it's encompassing policy, um, and it's a good start to have something in place in case we need to utilize it in the, the near future.
Okay, um, I'm gonna wait and, um, well, let me just add to it now. Um, basically, I, um, we've, we, uh, we've got a couple of, uh, public records requests, and they keep, uh, evolving and changing, and, um, I've visited the city clerk's office a couple of times, um, and to try and get an understanding of, of how we're approaching this. I've talked to the city manager about it, and then I, I just simply felt that we need to get a little better organized, and, um, Mrs. Kardashian was available, so I asked her a few questions concerning this, and that's when actually the, um, the question came up with the policy. There are state, uh, standards that can be followed as far as legal reimbursements and things, but I, I think from the standpoint of, um, the situation that we've got right now is that, um, I know Commissioner Carr's been on the commission for six years, almost six years. I've been on the commission, plus I was a former city manager, but there's three of you that are fairly new that have been on the commission, at least when this whole thing started, about six months. And, um, I, I know there's always concerns about, uh, these huge public records requests and, and, and it, it's extremely comprehensive and, and we need to be thorough, uh, so we, we did some work in that area as well, and you'll see that a little later, but, um, the one thing that I do know about this commission um, is that it acts in good faith and good conscience of what he thinks it's right, and there's always this question in people's mind of whether, um, what I'm doing is, is something that, um, the old adage, no good deed goes unpunished, sort of thing. Um, so I, I felt that, um, this might be something that it was extremely important that the commission can read in black and white rather than sitting down and having conversations with people like attorneys, that there's nothing in writing. So I, I think this is a very valuable document. It seems that we should have had it in place for, for some time, and we have not, and I'm extremely grateful, um, that this was brought out at this time, but it was as a result of actually my questions, city manager's questions, the city clerk's questions, and, and just trying to get or better organized for it. So, that, that's what I wanted to add as well, uh, to this, and, and what I wanna do now is, um, go to public comments and see if there's any, uh, comments concerning this item from anybody that's here this evening. Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
And we do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go to commission comments, vice, uh, actually questions, Vice Mayor Lunt.
Um, I have no questions. It seems to be pretty straightforward and, and at least appears to me from a layman's perspective to do what we needed to do, so I'm good. from a layman's perspective to do what we needed to do, so I'm good.
Commissioner Carr.
I don't have any questions, Mayor.
Commissioner Eisner.
No questions.
Commissioner Cuyas.
No questions.
Okay, um, I don't have any, um, questions per se, so if, if that's the case with everybody, I'd like to have a motion and a second, please.
Motion to pass Resolution twenty-two-two dash forty-seven.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. Item twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, item twenty-two, amending the rules of procedure. Mr. Salzman, if you could read this by title, please.
Resolution twenty-two-two dash forty-eight, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, revising the rules of procedures for the Board of Commissioners, repealing all resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Um. Ms. Jacobs, I'm gonna ask you about this one.
So, uh, in our discussions with, uh, Attorney Kardashian and stuff, we also, in the public records request, we did have some additional questions as well as questions from the mayor and the city manager. And in doing that, we felt that there was, uh, some items needed to place in our rules and procedures. And so they're noted as well and given to the commission as they're newly elected. The first one is, uh, under the, uh, First Order of Business, and it's regarding, uh, the Sunshine Law and Public Records Course. It's also the rules and procedures, uh, for, uh, email policies, text messages, and such as far as records requests, and, uh, the responsibility of the elected official. Uh, the other, uh, items in here, uh, excuse me, bear with me. Um, and some of these items were also the suggestion, uh, as a review from Attorney Kardashian. You'll see in number eight, the files and public records, um, the policy mentions the email and text policy we have at, from, uh, our IT. We just reiterated those items in here, and we put a date that this, the commission should follow and forward those emails to their city email address. She also, um, if you go to page six, the, uh, under the consent agenda, the items, she recommended, and there again, um, she just said people are not using the word invocation on agendas and such, and recommended that we change that to reflection. And, um, the, for the quasi judicial hearings, she added some corrections, as you'll see, uh, in thirteen, fifteen, and sixteen, just the order, um, that we should not close public hearing prior to the applicant's rebuttal because those items could be, um, considered as evidence. On page ten, just basically, um, how to reach, there was just some additional language, how to reach the commission versus how to make public comments, uh, to be read into the record. And on page eleven, there again, just procedural, um, some procedural changes, uh, on questioning the commission and the discussion and debate. And I think that was it. Those were all the changes that were made, but like I said, basically, it was that we placed them so they're all in one document, and that we give these documents and they're signed, that they've, uh, received them and read them.
Right, thank you.
As far as a newly elected official.
Again, let me just add to this. This was another part of the questions concerning, um, whether we had policies on this or that, and we did. But for example, the, um, the text policy was held by our IT department, is that correct?
That is correct.
Right, and, and, and there was some conversation of whether the IT department had gone over it with the commissioners, and there normally is some, uh, sign, signature that's required when that happens. But then I, I don't know what commissioners, but there was some question of whether they'd actually seen it. I know I did not, and there was a good reason for that. When I became a commissioner, it was COVID. I didn't have access to anybody, so I, I, and that, and I never caught up with me, and that's okay. So there were a couple of things like that, that, uh, I, and, and also our rules of procedure. In this way, we could, um, actually provide one location, as Ms. Jacobs, um, stated, where all these requirements, these policies in terms of communication with residents and so forth are located in one spot, and that way, there would be no reason why, uh, commissioners, um, should not follow them. And, and I'm a big believer, if we could do these things incrementally, month by month, these large public records requests, um, would not that, would not that, would not be that challenging. If y'all remember during Anclode Harbor, there was something like, um, uh, three public records requests for me alone over a three-year, a three-week period, and I had to deal with that, um, and get that information. And, um, so I, I feel, uh, fortunate that we've, are now formalizing this in our rules of procedure. And then also that would help you as far as what the expectations are, as far as the information. And then also, uh, the trade-off is that at least you have the information of what needs to be done, and also you key that with this, um, resolution that we just passed with regard to legal fees. It ought to give you some comfort level that if we act accordingly, then, and we're acting in the best that we can for our government, then it, this no good deed goes unpunished is less likely to happen in that regard. So that's the whole idea behind that. Let me go to public comments on this, um, if there's any public comments. Mr. Jomp, are there any remote access comments?
And we do not have anyone in attendance at this time.
Okay, um, let me go to commission for any comments. I'm sorry, questions. Mr., uh, Vice Mayor Lunt.
Yeah, I have a couple. Uh, on page one, um, section, I guess, uh, A1, um, it says to schedule a time to watch the four-hour. First of all, let me, let me get something straight here. This says within ten days of a newly elected official to teach will or shall. I'm kinda fine with that. But I wanted to mention at this particular time that Florida Statute one, one-twelve, says that this is a requirement annually for every elected official, not just the newly ones. If you're on your second year, your third year, you still have to do it every year. And that wasn't kind of in here, but, um, and I'm not sure if everybody's aware of it, but I wanted to bring that up. Another thing is that, uh, this says that you need to watch this four-hour online League of Cities Ethics Course at City Hall. And I don't understand the reason for that. I watched it and got certified and so forth, but I did it in my office rather than at City Hall. I don't, I don't see there's any necessity to require your attendance at City Hall to do this. It's not like we need a hall monitor or something to make sure that we're watching it. So that's one comment. Don't laugh, Mike. I'm getting there. I read all this stuff, you know? So I understand the idea about, uh, files and public records. Um, there's some, how do I say, some leeway here in the fact that, that, uh, in section eight, item C, it says, you know, that each commissioner shall ensure that their respective files and archives are up to date. I have no idea what up to date means. It doesn't mean as of the fifteenth of the month period? I mean, is this like, you have to be up to date to the fifteenth of the month? Or we have to spend the fourteenth of every month going through the previous month's records? Is, was that the intention, or could somebody answer that? Yes, no?
I think when we discussed this, the intent was that, you know, some follow it, some don't. So we put the fifteen days just as a, you know, some do it instantly.
I understand the obligation. I just, I just wanted to know how rigid it.
And I think just for records request, it would be easier, cause then the, the, you as the official could respond and say, well, I've sent you everything I has of today, um, kinda thing. So I think that was the, Mark, do you remember anything in addition?
Yeah, I, I would, personally, I would expect this, it says up to date for the previous month. At least, cause it's kind of in the middle of the month and stuff like that, and fifteen days is the much that cuts off? We got a PRR that requires something up to date.
Wasn't that because of, when they take office, it's close to the, it's close to the fifteenth?
Yeah, but like I said, I think we just set a date, so there's something, you know, some kind of.
It could be the beginning of the month, the middle of the month, end of the month, really.
I don't mind if the fifteenth is fine, it's just what up to date means.
Oh, okay.
Does, you know, does that mean up to date with the end of the next previous month, or up to date to the fifteenth?
Previous month, at the end of the previous month.
You know, if, if that's, you know, what we're operating under, it's fine. I'm fine. I just thought it was a little.
Is that correct, Ms. Jacobs, from the end, from the end of the previous month?
That's correct.
So you got fifteen days to bring the, the previous.
Yeah, so that, and that sounds reasonable to me. So I just had a question about that part. I didn't, I ran out of page markers, so forgive me.
Now, that's it, I have no further questions. Commissioner Carr.
Yeah, a couple items. Uh, I'm in agreement with, uh, Vice Mayor about not needing to do the ethics training in City Hall. I think that's, I don't see a reason for that. But I do agree, I think it's a good idea to put some type of standard and, and right when you're elected to go through these items, and additionally, to be required to read the rules and procedures and sign off on it. Something I think would be a good idea to add is that, um, currently, there's no form or way for the city commissioner to know about any of this stuff who's elected. And so I think it would be good to add that the city clerk's office, or the city clerk or deputy clerk will provide the rules and procedures, or something along those lines, because today, there's no, there's nothing, the rules that say this is how you're gonna get it. So I think it's important that there's some type of way for that to happen. In section eight, that pertains to public records, I think it would be important to go ahead and include, after instant message, just put the word social media with example of Facebook, Twitter, Instagram post. Social media is ever-changing. I think MySpace is an example of that from years ago. Um, there's other social media platforms that could come out, um, such as TikTok or other things that are out there. So I think it might be, it would serve the board well to put social media, and you can give a couple of examples. And then from the fifteenth of each month, the question that I would have is if a, a commissioner forgot to post or send, um, let me, let me take a step back. All communications relevant to their respective positions to a city, this is, I'm sorry, preserving all communications relevant to, uh, their respective positions to a city searchable database. So currently, what I do is I take a screenshot and I just email it to Trish, our secretary. I, I don't know if there, if we need to, or if it would be, serve the board better to understand what a city searchable database is. I don't know if that's.
That's right.
If that's fair or not, um, but maybe we need to put a little details on what a city searchable database is, if it's sending it to the clerk's office, or sending it to an email to the, the secretary for her to file it, or what that would look like. So I think that would help, just to explain a little bit further.
I think, I'm sorry, we discussed this sort of.
Let, let's finish, uh, the questions, and then we can go back into a discussion, uh, Ms. Jacobs.
It would be any city email address that's backed up, and we could search, if we did a word search, so you could even send it to your own personal CTS.
Okay, perfect.
Address, because then we could, when we do record searches, they pull up all addresses for that word search. Is that?
Yeah, I, I just wanna make sure it's clear. I mean, to wanna see this, it, it doesn't really make sense to me. I don't know what a city searchable database is, if I were to come on as a new commissioner, even as a commissioner, what that even means.
No.
So if there's any requirement to send it to somebody, I just knew that we were supposed to send it to Trish and, in the past, and that's what I've done historically. Um, so I'm fine with that. And then the fifteen day, I'll go to the fifteen day situation, so since it's in the rule, rules and procedures, and, and city attorney, maybe you can opine on this one. Let's say it's March, and then you forgot to, to do it, and it's June, and you had a comment from back in March. You've technically broken the rules and procedures. Is there a penalty against the commissioner on that situation?
That would be an, an internal determination of the board. Normally, the penalties you see are sanctions. You know, either a public, like, you, a public sanction, or, uh, or something a little more formal than that. But nothing more than that.
Okay.
Honestly, I think it would be just, you know, come on now, get your thing up to date.
Yeah, I, I'm just putting it out there, cause I know, I mean, it's, it's an easy, if it's a monthly recurring item, it's easy to forget to maybe update one month and then, but like I said, I just wanna bring it up as a discussion.
It would be, uh, forsake of, of, cause this is a public meeting, I was, you know, I, I think when we get a public records request and, um, and that had, you have, you know, not you, but a commissioner has not kept up with it for six or seven months, it becomes basically, uh, quite challenging in the sense of, one, it, it creates stress, two, it's a distraction of trying to focus on what we need to do now. And, um, and, and I think it's just a good policy, in my opinion. And I'm actually a little appreciative, cause this would incentivize me. There's something there that I've read that says I've got to do it. Right now, there isn't anything. And Ms. Jacobs will say, you know, you need to do it, okay, but there's nothing there.
There, there is, Mayor, there is a problem, because you could be individually liable for public records.
Right.
And then you, and then you face the fine, because the defense, honestly, for the city is, we have a policy. You're not following the policy, so now you have individual liability. The city's protected in that scenario, but the individual commissioner could be looking at, you know, prosecution and a fine. So that, that's why, you, you know, it's important for people to at least try to adhere to this policy.
Yeah, so the next question I would have then is, can you put the secretary or the city clerk's office sends an email to validate if there's any updates? I mean, that would be, again, you're protecting the board. As a reminder, right?
There's no problem.
And I think that would be something that would serve the board well. Again, I'm, I'm done in four months, so.
That's fine.
Um, I just wanna make sure that whoever's up here's got as many reminders as they can about different things that are going on.
You're absolutely right. There's no, no reason not to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Ignore Ms. Jacobs, she will.
Let's see, Commissioner Carr, Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't think you need to do the orientation here in City Hall either. I think that could be changed. As a policy goes, I, uh, if I'm gonna post, first of all, I try to stay away from posting things in the city. And if it's gonna, if I have to post something in the city, I immediately transfer it over to my email and the story, it's there, uh, my city email. But there are certain things that I wanted to try to also add. We have no dress code here, and I would like to put that in, that we should have a dress code for being up here as well.
Does that include lights around your neck?
Yes, it does. I thought you'd never ask.
I'm sitting there listening, okay, I understand.
Yes, if, if that's something that we.
No, I'm just teasing you.
I'm game.
You're right, I don't have an issue with that.
And, and I like the humor, by the way. I always did. The other thing is, we have, um, there's no consequences for any of these rules that we have here. So I, I have a whole bunch of rules, and I can break them all because I don't have any consequences. So we have here a situation where a letter was sent speaking for the board. So, we have here a situation where a letter was sent speaking for the board. I didn't have a problem with this letter, so I don't know why any commissioner would speak for the board. We're not supposed to be able to speak for the board, and that's what this says.
I'm not sure, I understand, what's the?
It's a letter to Mark that was written by a commissioner stating, "How is the board supposed to know these things?" So, the person is speaking for the board. And it's a commissioner. Communication from you to the board is key, there's just multiple areas. Again, if there's an issue with one person, the communication from you to me is key, is the word should be used. Um, same thing is, how am I supposed to know? Not how is the board supposed to know, because I have no communication problem.
Yeah, I, I think it's just rhetor- rhetorical, and, and, I mean, I don't know that it's, it's beyond that, I just, um, and, and it's like I've said from, to the commission, uh, the key is actually communicating with the city manager, there's nothing, you know, there's nothing to keep you from communicating, um, with him. Um, I do know that sometime, I try and be very sensitive as far as weighing whether the item is something critical that I need to contact them, and if it's something that can, if it's over a weekend, if it's something that I can wait till Monday morning, or, I, I know Mr. LaCource, if there's something that, uh, happens that I see that could become a public issue, I'll let him know right away and let, and just basically tell him to use his judgment in this, so. But I, I think the idea about how is the commission supposed to know, that kind of comment is, is, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I would view that as somewhat rhetorical, rather than anything speaking on behalf of the commission. I mean, I'm not sure if that helps.
It's all in the interpretation.
I understand, I understand, okay.
And we still don't have any consequences for anything that we do.
I like the idea of a dress code, and I think that's something that we could, that, the whole idea behind this resolution is that it can be updated between meetings and that sort of thing from one meeting to the next, so we'll, we'll work on that, and, and, you may be having a, an agenda item on the discussion, maybe early next year sometimes, as far as the dress code goes, that's, okay.
It's fine. That's it. Commissioner Kuyas?
I have no comment.
No comment, okay. I'm well aware of this, uh, resolution, and, and, and what I'd like to do is, um.
I have another.
Oh, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, it was actually in relation to the conversation between Commissioner Carr and, and, uh, Attorney, did I hear it correct, that because of this public record request stuff, that the city can merely go, "We have a policy," and then all of a sudden, it's on the individual from a, from a legal responsibility?
If, if an individual commissioner is not following not just the policy, but its law.
Well, I understand, but the state statute doesn't says, "On demand," it doesn't say, "Keep these records up."
Exactly, you are correct. It says that if I come in and ask for public records, you're supposed to provide those to me without any delay.
That's correct.
Unless I have to, unless you have to spend time, you know, searching it depending on the request.
Yeah, I understand, I've read the regulations several times, but it doesn't say anything about the city divorcing itself by that, by saying, "We have a policy."
No, but what if someone was to sue the city for a public records request, and they would.
Sue them if they not getting the information that they think they should get.
So, if somebody sued the city, the individual commissioner who's not providing those records to the city could have individual liability, and one of the defenses would be, for the city, is that we have a policy, and we have procedures in effect. The commissioners are following it, one commissioner is not. So, that, it just adds to the individual, uh, having additional heightened responsibility that they're not adhering to, that would be used against them, and it would be used for the city to protect the city from any lawsuit. Remember, the records custodian is the person who would be sued on behalf of the city.
Yeah.
And so, the records custodian's defense would be, "We asked for the records, we have a policy."
That's not what you said.
That commissioner.
We have a policy. That a policy is not asking for the records. You don't know those records are gonna be asked for until they're asked for.
And, and that's my fault by not explaining more. It, it's one of the things that would be looked at, that you have a policy, and someone's not following that policy.
Okay, so I just wanted to.
I think the idea is if, if the commissioner was cavalier and simply ignored the policy, and, and there are some records that, let's say during the lawsuit, somebody out here has it.
Right.
And it wasn't produced during a normal.
I understand that, I just wanted to, I didn't like the idea that all of a sudden, you're passing on.
Well, you, you know you have individual responsibility.
Culpability without due process.
Right, you, you know you have the individual responsibility anyway.
Yes.
And so, um, I would hope that no one ever puts themselves in that position, where they're not providing those records to the records custodian. I think this policy, in essence, is trying to make sure that you do it as a reminder.
I just didn't like the, the size of the kick at that particular second.
It, it is a little kick, though, it is.
Believe me, you'll live better this way. Rather than, uh, you're, you've been a commissioner for, three of you have been commissioners for eight months.
Six or something.
Supposedly, if we, let's say, you know, you're in your, your, you know, let's say, commissioner's been on board for five years, and some obscure public records comes in for something that happened, and it, there's a, I don't know what the, the public records, uh, law, is it ten years or something? We need to keep public records for?
Uh, there's, uh, there's a, there's a schedule.
Yeah, it depends on the, on the item.
Yeah, and it comes in that, you know, you were commissioner, five years ago, you said something at a meeting, and I know that you mentioned that you had communications with, with John Smith, I want to see those communications.
There's also a, a recommendation here, um, to require an affidavit of response to public record requests. I assume that's something saying, "We got a P R R, Irene let us know that we need to respond to this P R R, and we've responded with."
What you did.
With due diligence and all the records that we have.
And we're working on a form.
Which I think is probably the best way to keep your house out of the fire.
And, and, and there's two things to remember, one is that, you know, this provision has an attorney's fee provision. And that's why we get all these rogue requests from people from other parts of the state or other states on public records requests, because they're looking to see if they can catch someone and get an attorney fee. Not to belittle my own profession, but that's what some people do.
There's guys who goes around chasing sunshine law violations, too.
Same thing.
You know?
It's a cottage industry that some attorneys are out there looking for those particular, in fact, I believe we're starting to get a few that are coming in, uh, Pinellas County, we usually get this, like, group that comes in and slowly goes through the county, and I think we're seeing some right now, I, a couple of the fire districts have been getting them, so, that, that's what they do.
They look for settlement.
We just want to be careful.
They, they look for a settlement, rather than going through a court.
Absolutely.
And, final comment for me on, on the discussion between you and, and Commissioner Eisner. I'm not for a dress code. I don't think anybody has ever had the right to tell me how to dress, I wouldn't expect them to, and that's my position on it, so.
Okay.
I don't need to be told how to dress.
Okay, yeah, well, we haven't discussed it yet, so, but, thank you for your.
It's like everything else, ideas are good, um, we haven't gotten to the discussing it yet, as though, I mean, they're good to the individual that makes them. I think I've, I've said everything before, that if you want to get ahead of, get out, ahead on the commission on something, then you've got to do that at your own risk. I understand. So.
Okay, so that was, uh, we finished the, the questions, if there are no other questions, um, I'd like to have a, now, I know there were a couple of things that Commissioner Carr came up, someone asked Commissioner Carr if he could make a motion and then get a second with maybe some of those things that you put in there, and if there's some other, some, someone else that came up with something, let's, let's hear that as well, as part of the motion.
Okay, so, motion to, uh, accept Resolution twenty-two dash forty-eight with the removal of at City Hall from Section One A One.
Okay, and then, I think Commissioner Carr, uh, wanted a reminder from the clerk's office.
Yeah, that the clerk's office would notify the newly-elected officials of the rules and procedures.
Okay, and then a reminder.
In the section, in Section One.
But a reminder also monthly?
Yeah, in Section Eight, it was, um, remove, or to add social media and give examples of Facebook, Twitter, for new changes, and then also, that the city clerk's office would send out a reminder on the fifteenth of each month to the Board of Commissioners.
Can, can I take that as a second, and then?
I would second that, yeah.
Okay, and then ask you to accept Commissioner Carr's additional comments. And Ms. Jacobs, did you catch all of that?
I did.
Okay, we've got it on video anyway, so.
I've, I've got a question, though, uh.
Okay, so we've got a first and a second, go ahead.
Um, so, the, the public boards, our other city boards, obviously, they're privy to the sunshine law as well, too, and public records requests. So, i- is there anything that we need to put in from the rules and procedures for the other boards that may get certain requests that come through, uh, there's something to look at, I don't know where that, where that stands today, where that falls.
No, that's a, that's a good question, and there's also, um, you know, staff, uh, so, they're subject to the sunshine law as well.
This, I, and I'm, Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt, but, does the city do, uh, annual training for the boards?
Well, we, yes, uh, we're a little bit behind because of issues, but, uh, we are planning, um, and you'll be seeing some other policies come forward, this is strictly B O C policies, but you'll be seeing other policies that'll also affect other boards and things that we'll be bringing back after the first of the year, I believe.
Yes, it involves train, it involves a lot of things, again, we're, we're learning a lot out of these couple of months. This, we seem important to be the first thing put in place, but we're always talking about training for boards, polygra- training, we've even got a person, we think, online to do, there's, there's a list in the, after the first of the year, as we go on to look at some, some enhance for all boards, city personnel, um, city department heads.
One, one of the things that I've tried to do with some of those boards, and so that it doesn't take a lot of their time, but to divide the three, meaning sunshine law, public records, and ethics, and at their particular board meeting, do that presentation, because it takes about a half hour, and so if you do it broken up that way, it doesn't take a lot of their time, uh, and you can do it over, oh, three meetings, and then they could have that on an annual basis, so they're up to date, uh, on those aspects, and I'd recommend something along those lines be done.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, we've got a, a motion and a second, and does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, we've got, we're work in progress, I guess, basically. So, uh, if there is no further discussion, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lunt?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotes.
Yes. Okay, does that do it for tonight? Okay, nine oh eight. We had originally scheduled, I mean, the estimate was to be finished at ten forty, so I want to congratulate the commission.
I keep going.
And of course, thank you to the public, there wasn't a whole lot of participation here this evening, but, uh, we did have some comments from remote access, which was appreciated. And, um, let me go to board and staff comments, um, Chief Young.
Let me start off by wishing everybody happy holidays, a Merry Christmas, a happy and safe New Year, and looking forward to another great, uh, epiphany coming forward. And also, just to ask everybody, uh, another day coming up that's, uh, near and dear to the hearts of my brothers and sisters and I at the Police Department, and that's December twenty-first, it'll be the eight-year end-to-watch anniversary for Officer Charlie Condeck, who was shot and killed in the line of duty here. I ask that you keep him, his family, and our thoughts and prayers, especially during that day in this holiday season. He will never be forgotten.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Attorney Sausman?
It's just like the board, it's been a pleasure working with you these last two nights. Um, I enjoy the way you handle the issues, and I'm happy to any extent that I've been able to help. Happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. City Manager LaCource?
Yes, um, I just want you to know that, um, Janina has hit the ball rolling on, uh, everything that came from last night's meeting as far as, um, the process, City Attorney New Hour of Peace has already hit everything, they're running forward. Um, I do want to talk a little bit, um, about, um, the ability, my ability to talk with both of our interim attorneys a little more, um, about what we talked about for the Attorney General's request for opinion. I want to talk to them to see if there's some other option, I don't have a lot of faith in that process, maybe I'm tainted. Um, but I'd like to talk with them a little, I know we talked about it last night, but before moving forward, and obviously, there's some contracts and stuff that have to come forward the first meeting of January, in relation to the special counsel and those things. I'd, I'd like to work with the two attorneys a little more to see what, you know, if we have maybe some other options on that charter question, um, or some other methods, um, to deal with it. Um, I just don't want to get a situation where we're waiting for that opinion a while, and then it gives us a, a opinion that doesn't help us, and we're at phase two after that, so I wanted, I wanted to have a little further. Um, obviously, we've only had one night since the meeting, so, I'd just like a little more time to talk to them, and maybe talk about that the first meeting of January, um, if that's okay with the board, or the direction of the board to move forward, otherwise, I'm just asking maybe a little more time to see if we've had some choices or alternatives to deal with that charter question.
Is there any objection to?
I just have a question, uh, so, it was part of, I think, the motion, um, during our meeting, so, would we need to have a different vote on that, since it was part of the motion?
Well, I.
And then, secondly, I don't, I don't really care who, as long as it's an attorney that knows the law, I'm happy to hear any opinion on it.
I, I, um. Attorney Sausman, please.
The motion was made, however, there wasn't a time period put on.
Right, that's what I was gonna say.
So, we can bring that back to your next meeting to do any clarification. I'm happy, and I'm sure, uh, Regina would be happy for us to opine on that section, and we have a lot of experience doing this. Um, and, uh, I have a lot of experience, obviously, with, with drafting, uh, charter changes and doing those things, so I'm happy. I can also look at current Attorney General opinions to also give some direction along those lines. So, uh, I know that I, I could do it, and Regina and I could do it together, um, and then bring that back for, for an opinion. If the board's happy with that, then we don't have to move any further on Attorney General opinion, and we can bring that up at your next meeting, to have that, a motion take place regarding that, your past motion.
I, 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 let me just say, before we start, the, the one thing that, um, we, we kind of made our decision last night, um, based on, uh, Commissioner Carr's reading of the charter, which, you know, it, it's valid, it's exactly what he said.
Absolutely.
But, um, I, I want to be completely candid with everybody, that I did have a conversation with Ms. Kardashian, and she pointed out the administrative section of our ordinances, which is two dash two concerning the attorney. And there's some other information in there that tends to, uh, it doesn't go against what the charter is, but it kind of softens that requirement in terms of more of an interpretation, in other words, the, uh, when the city commission requires directing, you know, when, when the city uh, commission requires the city attorney to act, defend lawsuits, that sort of thing. Um, and then there's some, I, I think what we, I, I, what I'm trying to get at is, I think we should allow the city manager to spend some time with, um, Mr. Sausman and also Ms. Kardashian, come back with y'all with something that may be, um, a little less, um, um, critical in terms of Attorney General's opinions, declaratory judgments with judges and, and things of that, there's probably some easy solutions, um, within that. I mean, for example, um, you know, an assistant city attorney for litigation could be established, and, and they, that person reports to the city attorney, that can be done.
Sure.
And, and so there's some real easy solutions to that, um, that I think that we.
Yes, and like I say, with the talent and experience of my two, you know, I'm lucky enough to have two temporary attorneys with a lot of experience, and those two getting together, I mean, you may have three or four options, you may have two options, maybe, but I think with a little more time than one day, I think we can look at all those options, then we still have the option at meeting to go forward with the attorney. Then we still have the option at meeting to go forward with the attorney, to keep the direction or change that. But I think them putting their heads together to give you some options, there could be some better, better, um, there could be some better ones and easier ways than, I don't know what your experience with, with the Attorney General opinion, how long they take. I, I just worry about everything these days, I take, so I'd like to bring that back to you in January.
I have a question here. So if I'm an attorney that's responding to the current RFP for city attorney, one of the things I'm going to do is look at the current city code that details the responsibility of the city attorney. You're talking about maybe perhaps modifying that on the fly during an RFP period? I, I'm not kosher with that.
No, it, it's, I, I think the issue was, um, the charter amendment of an RFP. Right now, we've got a litigation attorney, that's Mr. Sausman.
Yes.
That was approved. The question was, can the, the city attorney under the charter says that they are responsible for the normal city attorney, but also the litigation as well?
Well, it says shall, it doesn't say required, it doesn't say must.
I, I don't disagree.
But anyway.
I don't disagree with you, but, um, but what I'm getting at is, and I, what I'm trying to get at is I agree that there's flexibility in that. But I think what, in order to be smart about it, we need to probably have, I, I'm uncomfortable with.
I think what you're, I, I think I understand you're trying to tailor it down to accommodate the fact that we now have a separate litigation attorney and a separate special counsel.
Right, right. In Commissioner, in Commissioner Carr's reading of the charter, which is accurate, says, you know, they're going to be responsible for litigation. The administrative section of our land development, or I'm sorry, of our ordinances, uh, 2-dash-2 refers to the response, duties and responsibilities of the attorney, appointment and responsibilities. It doesn't mean that you can't have an assistant city attorney that reports to the attorney, the, the city attorney, assistant city attorney that does litigation. That, that's a possibility.
Oh, I see, yeah.
Yeah, so what I'm getting at is, uh, what I'm really trying to get at is I'm not there to want to ask the Attorney General their opinion of what we're doing here in Tarpon Springs. I don't like that because it, it, I mean, I don't think it's that.
We shouldn't defer to the Attorney General.
It's that critical, I mean, that's something we can solve ourselves. And I think it's, um, it, I think once the two attorneys get together with the city manager, I think you'll see that that falls, falls out rather than taking some real, using a five-pound s- hammer to.
I just wanted to caution you that changing the playing ground during an RFP.
No, it's no.
Generally frowned upon.
But, but if the RFP process produces some number of, of, um, of, um, applicants, for example, and that's assuming hypothetically that, um, Mr. Sausman is one of those applicants as well and the commission chooses some other applicant other than Mr. Sausman and the commission wants to retain Mr. Sausman as the litigation attorney, we need to have that problem solved by the time we hear that, uh, RFP that comes back. I think, what was it, the middle of January, we said?
It's gonna go out in 30 days.
After that, so it'd be by the end of February, we have to have that solved so we don't wind up letting that influence as who's going to be selected as the city attorney, is what I'm getting at.
Okay, I fail to see the complication, but.
Yeah, I understand, I, I just, it's just the city manager asking for some time. I said, you know, I, I had some conversations with Ms. Kardashian, I don't want to talk about it tonight. I think that the attorneys need to come back to you and talk to you as, as a gru, uh, talk to us as a group and then you can hear it from them rather than, than me. I mean, I, the only thing I'm concerned about is going to the Attorney General. That's, I don't, I mean, in, in deference to, you know, what you said, it's.
I, I absolutely think that.
Right.
I think that what you're, what the city manager and what you all are discussing is appropriate.
Yeah.
Um, especially in light of the RFP, uh, going out. Um, although I will tell you from, from having just experienced the RFP, obviously you had separate litigation council to begin with. You have, uh, at least from what I can tell, you've used, uh, separate, um, labor and employment council. So there's been a practice that the city's had. And I think to some extent, just off the top of my head, I could say an interpretation has been handled by the city for a long period of time, that you can use additional counsel for additional purposes. And I think that's important when you look at this, what has the city done in the past and what have you continuing doing? When I looked at, uh, I mean, there are some cities and, for example, for me personally, being a litigator in, in Gulfport, I handle all litigation other than what our insurance company has. But I oversee that insurance, um, so you could say, based on your charter, that yes, you are still handling it because you're overseeing what's going on. So if you have separate counsel handling certain things, you could do it. Your city attorney just reports to you as to what's going on, so they're monitoring those things. Uh, doesn't mean they're controlling, um, what the litigation attorney does.
Uh huh.
But, and, and also without going too far into this, I, you know, I, I've told you that I handle, um, litigation for government agencies through an insurance company. And so one of the things that I do is always keep the city attorney informed, copying them on what's going on. So they have that understanding. They don't necessarily control what I do, but I do ask them, run things by them. So that's, that could be very easily what comes out of this, uh, a similar situation, which would make sense.
Your question was, that was rolled into the, uh, motion last night to go to this Attorney General. Attorney Sausman said there was no timeframe for that. So does that satisfy you as far as letting the city manager do what he needs to do?
I'm happy for the city manager to get opinions. I mean, to be honest with you, it might be best to go after a different city attorney who's not representing us from a litigation standpoint, but I just want to make sure there's not any.
Right. Is, is there any objection to, okay, you've got your answer, uh, Vice Mayor Lunt? You're okay?
I'm fine.
Okay. All right. What else you have?
That's it, happy holidays.
You're scared to ask?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Ms. Jacobs.
I'd just like to wish everyone a merry Christmas and a safe and happy holidays.
All right. Um, Vice Mayor Lunt.
Okay, so we're back. I just wanted to, uh, to both thank our fire and police department for being there all the time and wishing them a happy holidays. I wanted to wish happy holidays to our staff, to the board, to the mayor, to the city manager, to our illustrious city clerk. Thank you very much for your work this year, it's been enjoyable. You've made my stay here for the last six months or seven months or whatever it's been, uh, very enjoyable experience, thank you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Carr.
Thanks, Mayor, uh, I want to wish the residents and businesses a Merry Christmas. It's been an honor to serve as a commissioner to the board in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Eisner.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to wish the residents, the board, uh, staff, everybody, I, I enjoy, um, everything that they do. Um, and I really enjoyed, uh, being in this Christmas parade. I'm pretty sure everybody, I'm pretty sure everybody heard me scream, "I love Tarpon Springs," and that's what I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Commissioner Kuyas.
Hey, I want to wish, uh, city staff, the residents of Tarpon Springs a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year and Happy Holiday Season. You know, 2022 has been a, a special year for all of us, working together and, uh, just look forward to, uh, January and hitting the ground running like we have been.
Thank you. I, I, as I said, um, there's many, many people in town. I know that, that it doesn't go for everybody because things are different for different families and things and, and they're going to, uh, reflect on things that have happened to them, both good and bad, uh, this time. So it is a time of reflection. I'm sure there's going to be many, many loved ones that are going to be missed because they're not with us anymore. Um, that's kind of a sad time and I fully recognize that. Um, on the other hand, there's many families with young children that, uh, should cherish this moment because myself as a father with grown kids, you, if you blink, they, they're going to be adults and time flies and, and so I, I hope that, um, whatever, uh, the circumstance is with people, uh, joy or sadness, that they, they do it as a family and, um, are with friends and, um, and, and recognize the importance of this time of year. And, and the only issue that I've ever had with Cr, with Christmas is the commercialization of it. It's just something that, I still have an issue with it. But nevertheless, um, you don't want that to distract with what the, the, the real occasion of this time period is. And I recognize it means different things for different religions as well. So I, I fully respect everybody's, um, beliefs in that regard. So for me, I'm going to try and, and, um, practice what I preach in that regard and I would hope that would be the case for everybody. I wish everybody well, a peaceful, uh, period. And as, uh, the city manager said, um, this is our last meeting of the year and it's 28 days until the next one, is that correct?
Yes.
And Mr. Licorice is counting. So, um, I do want to thank this commission for what I think is an outstanding year. Um, we've, we've kind of calibrated the way we work together. I, I know that there's always these little dust-ups and stuff, but that, that's going to happen. It, nothing is ever perfect, but nevertheless, I, I think we've, we've worked our way through some pretty challenging times so far. And I'm hoping that the challenging times are behind us and I, I'm hoping that, um, with regard to some of the biggest issues, which I think the special counsel is going to help us with, we can let them handle it and we can focus on moving the city forward with what the residents want and continue keeping those smiles on people. So I, I want to wish everybody peace, joy, happiness and, and, um, and just spend that time with whoever you need to spend it to, um, for friendship, uh, family relationships and, and remember your loved ones, uh, whether they're here in town elsewhere or that they're no longer with us. So, um, thank you, and that's all I have. Um, we're going to adjourn at 9:27 PM. Meeting adjourned.